Director of meeting for Bussaras City Council for April the 3rd, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foe.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the March 20th, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca, to accept the March 20th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Our first speaker this evening will be Chad Schwimley, our acting fire chief. He has his 2017 annual report. I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, thank you. Well, everybody should have received their packet there. I just got a little bit to say. It was another busy year for community projects in the fire department. One hundred and sixty-nine smoke alarms were installed by firefighters in the community in 2017. This was the first full year of this project that's a joint effort with American Red Cross. The fire department installs smoke detectors along with going over home safety and fire prevention tips. The project has been a huge success and thanks to the Red Cross and all that have helped. The firefighter's local 1120 had great success this, with its Labor Day weekend collection for MDA. They collected seven thousand dollars and thirty-one dollars and seven, thirty, wow, seven thousand, one dollar and thirty-one cents. There was also a great time had by all that attended the spooktacular in October. The annual toy drive raised over eight hundred dollars in cash along with food, toys, and clothing that helped over one hundred and twenty-five families and three hundred children during the holiday season. A special thanks to all that gave and helped with these events. The department roster changed quite a bit during 2017. Austin Ray was hired on January 28th. Ryan Sparks was promoted to captain on February 21st. On April 28th Lieutenant Chris Schaefer retired with over twenty-eight years of service in the department. Casey Gillen was promoted to lieutenant on May 2nd along with Steve Sargel, who got promoted twice in 2017. He also got promoted to captain on September 5th. On May 26th Captain Greg Scott also decided to retire. He too had over twenty-eight years of service. Jeremy Woodlot was hired on May 28th. Greg Hershey was promoted to lieutenant on June 23rd. And Jeremy Gillen was hired on June 26th. On April 25th I Chad Schwimley was made acting chief until Chief Keller returns to work. Congratulations and best wishes to those that retired, hired, and were promoted. The community is thankful and appreciates your service. The fire station got some much-needed TLC in the fall of 2017. All three of the front overhead doors were replaced, two entry doors and frames were replaced. The building had a few bricks replaced and was tuck-pointed where needed. The exterior of the building was pressure washed and sealed. The exterior wall capping also had some work done to it to stop some leaks. This will help extend the life of the building for a few more years. The fire department received three grants in 2017 totaling thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The EMS priority one grant provides EMS supplies to better equipment for handling pediatric emergencies. The BWC firefighter exposure and environmental elements grant, although the FEEG, was used to purchase new hoods and gloves. This is part of an initiative to help prevent cancer in firefighters. We also received a BWC safety intervention grant that was used to purchase two stair chairs and two auto pulse resuscitation systems. The stair chairs reduce the risk of injury by allowing us to transport a patient downstairs without lifting. The auto pulses provide high-quality automated CPR to victims of sudden cardiac arrest. This equipment will help protect our firefighters and give our residents a better chance of surviving a cardiac arrest. The fire department helped with other tasks throughout the city in 2017. Firefighters maintained the flagpole in the square by replacing the pollard and raising the lower if the flag is necessary. They helped the street department set art at the Shines Art Park. They also helped plow the snow and salt the sidewalks outside that art park. They also helped with lights at the ballfields and filling barrels and tents at the festival for filling the baptismal tank for a drug intervention rally. It's a great to have employees that care about their community and thanks to all the help to make our community a better place to live.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the chief? Yes?
I'd just like to make a statement. Acting chief Schwimley is, we put him in some difficult situation here last year and, you know, not just with chief's illness and recovery and all straight contract negotiations and, you know, it was very difficult for him. I think it's time he probably took over the brand and I'd just like to, you know, see if we can get him around the clock for all you've done for the city in the last year. We thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? I need you to step to the podium, please. We need you to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Greg White. I live in 1125 Hope Crest Drive, University of City, Louisiana. I just wanted to address the council about some comments and statements that have been made on the ambulance district. Mayor said that it would cost the citizens more running the state and district. I disagree. Our new council president, if the subsidy was a hundred thousand dollars, the city would only pay forty-six thousand dollars. And that's far less than the one million one point five that Mr. Myers has kind of put together. Also, the city, the mayor said that the city was losing revenue by not operating in our own service, two million dollars over the last fifteen years. So my question is, why did the city do with the subsidy money that they didn't have to pay out since MedCor left and Mercy Health came in years ago? Also, the state tax policy reduced by the general fund revenue? That has been known for many, many years that came out to tell municipalities that you're going to lose some funding. My other thing too is if you do bring in an ambulance service into a contract, don't you think they want to bill further services that they're going to provide? Some other questions? I am kind of concerned about the, the acting fire chief made some statements that I have read. The city pays for updated training for their EMQs and firefighters. Most of that is probably paid at an overtime rate for the contract. I figured that it probably costs the city between twelve thousand and twenty thousand dollars a year probably for that. I also question that Fort Corwin has already made approximately three, three hundred and sixty assists less support, but it varies according to that statement. What timeframe is that? A year, six months? Nobody knows. Also, the whole township that has a contract with the city gun and fire EMS, I believe that is around a hundred thousand dollars a year that they pay. If you don't quote me. What is it?
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand dollars that they pay the city over there for two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two residents.
That's twice as much as what you just said, just for the record.
Okay. And also that the fully equipped squad costs around two hundred thousand dollars. That must be one heck of an ambulance because I know that you could probably purchase two for the price of that. I also understand that manpower per shift is three, sometimes four, maybe five. I understand there's Kelly days and people that have vacation days. I also question and I kind of agree with the firefighters' union president stated that they're already understaffed and their concern is to have appropriate staffing to correctly provide proper services for residents. I agree with that. I also agree with firefighter Greg Hershey's statement that didn't understand why the city waited until the very end to talk about this. The mayor gave the ambulance district a letter back in August of 2017 that the city was going to be out. I also question why the ISO was brought into the general statement. This has nothing to do with EMS whatsoever. That is totally about fire suppression. Yes, additional manpower would improve maybe the ISO rating, but that's not at all. And according to the city auditor, those firefighters cost about ninety thousand dollars a year with salary benefits. But I do agree with the city auditor. Until you see the hard facts and numbers, you don't know how much it's going to cost us residents. Lieutenant Walker made a statement. What if GE goes out? What about Timpian? Do you have a backup plan? What is the loss in monies to the city if they both go out? Yes, Mrs. Blackford, a feasibility study should be done. The firefighter union stated that they could have one done by the International Association of Firefighters. And he has, Mr. Myers, the numbers that you have put out are in the ballpark. Mine came in just around one million dollars. So he is correct in what he's stating. It is mine. I have over twenty-some years in EMS and fire. There is no grudge match against the residents of this city. There's just been a poor choice of words that officials have used and said. I feel that both sides of this issue should put everything aside and work for all the residents or the community as a whole who entrust officials in making good decisions. For the city officials as a resident, stay in the district, work things out, then sit down and involve everyone. The residents, the union, and business alike, a union for.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Anyone else to address council this evening? Welcome back.
Thank you. John Rossmann, 5550 Lincoln Highway. I've done some research on this over the years, doing a lot of what Mr. White just said. I also noticed a lot of the information in the newspaper referring to Galleon and their budget being basically a hundred and seventy-five dollars more than the borough's budget netted them a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. But they also omitted the two hundred and, I believe, eighteen thousand dollars the whole township provided to Galleon Fire. So that really is not, not much of a profit benefit to all the money they spent. And I also noticed the ISO ratings in the last article that I saw. Several years ago, I contacted my local insurance company, go double through since I was eighteen. I was told at that time that, and I see you've got some insurance agents here so you can confirm this, at the time, ratings from three to five pay the same rates for fire protection. And in order to be accurate, I called my insurance company again this week. This was several years ago that I called them. Bussaras at the time was five, so was Galleon years ago. Was told at the time, three to five pay the same rates. Currently, to his knowledge, every insurance carrier they cover, from one to six, pays the same rate. So there is zero benefit for you. You're never even better than the one that's a good you're going to get. The only thing worse than that is from apparently a seven to nine and ten being no insurance. So, yeah, I don't know why that would have been part of this discussion in the first place. But yes, the ambulance district has worked phenomenally well for several years. Everybody saved a pile of money and I think we should all work together and try and work this out. I'll see how the city can possibly finance this at this time, maybe in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? None? Does anyone else want to address council this evening? No one? Okay, moving on. Communications and petitions.
We have three letters. I'll start with the first one. This is addressed to Bussaras City Council dated March 21st. Dear Health and Safety Committee, the Bussaras, the City of Bussaras Traffic Commission would like to request the Health and Safety Committee approve the following amendments to the Traffic Control Act. The four-way stops on East Mansfield at Spring Street, East Mansfield Street at Poplar Street, and East Mary Street at Poplar Street. The traffic commission voted to suspend an MDA trial to approve the four-way stops with time served. The four-way stops have proven to be efficient for traffic flow. Two, Quaker Road from St. Bart's Court to Tiffin Street to be a fifty-five mile per hour speed zone. The traffic commission approved ODOT's recommendation from their traffic study in which council approved on November 21, 2017 with resolution number 233, 2017. Number three, South Tedeschi Avenue from Mount Zion Road to Beal Avenue to be a forty-five mile per hour speed zone. The traffic commission approved ODOT's recommendation from their traffic study in which council approved on November 21, 2017 with resolution of the 233, 2017. And finally, Plymouth Street from East Irving Street to the US 30 ramp to be a forty-five mile per hour speed zone. The traffic commission approved ODOT's recommendation from their traffic study in which council approved on November 21, 2017 with resolution number 233, 2017. Thank you, Jeff Reiser, Traffic Commission, and that has to be referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding the letter? Then I need a motion to put this in Health and Safety Committee?
So...
Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, to put the traffic commission report into Health and Safety Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. That will be in Health and Safety Committee and the format is that you'll discuss their recommendations and then if you approve then we will go for legislation to make that part of the traffic control map.
We also have a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation addressed to Mayor Jeff Reiser. Dear TreeCityUSA supporter, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm right to congratulate Bussaras on earning a recognition as a 2017 TreeCityUSA. Residents of Bussaras should be proud to live in a community that makes the planning and care of trees a priority. Bussaras is one of more than thirty-four hundred TreeCityUSA's with a combined population of one hundred and forty million. The TreeCityUSA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with U.S. Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters. If ever there was a time for trees, now is that time. Communities worldwide are facing issues with air quality, water resources, personal health and well-being, and energy use. Bussaras is stepping up to do its part. As a result of your commitment to effective urban forest management, you are helping to provide a solution to these global challenges. We hope you are excited to share this accomplishment and close to this package is a press release for your convenience as you prepare to contact local media and the public. State foresters are responsible for the presentation of the TreeCityUSA flag and the materials. We will forward information about your awards to your state foresters office to coordinate presentation. It would be especially appropriate to make the TreeCityUSA award a part of your community's Arbor Day ceremony. Again, we celebrate your commitment to the people and trees at Bussaras and thank you for helping to create a healthier planet for all of us. Best regards, Dan Lamb, President. And that just has to be accepted and filed.
Okay, I need a motion to accept and file this letter?
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Foote and second by Mr. Wireball to accept the letter from the president of the Fort Arbor Day Foundation or the, who are they actually?
Arbor Day Foundation.
Arbor Day Foundation, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Moving on.
And lastly, we have a letter dated March 28th to Bussaras City Council from the City Planning Commission regarding the retirement of Richard Strickland and the appointment of Robert Field. Dear Council President, Mr. Richard Strickland has informed me of his intentions to retire from service as a member of the Bussaras City Planning Commission. I have approached Mr. Robert Field about serving on the commission as his replacement and he has indicated willingness to do so. We ask you to consider the approval of the appointment of Mr. Field to serve a six-year term on the City Planning Commission. Thank you, Mayor Jeff Reiser, Chairman, Planning Commission, and that is up to a vote of council.
This, first of all, we want to thank Mr. Strickland, Richard Strickland. He has, he has been a well-serve, a servant of the city in a lot of different capacities and he continued on with the City Planning Commission. This appointment is an appointment that is done by the mayor. It is not an appointment of councils and so all's we need is a vote to say we approve it. So I need a motion, please?
I need a motion.
Okay, second?
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote to approve the appointment of Mr. Field for a six-year term on the City Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Moving on. Standing committee reports. Ms. Sack, would you get started with this, please?
Bussaras City Council's joint regular committee met Thursday, March 22nd, 6:00 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, myself, Derek Coates, and Andrew Shaw. Number one, Bussaras City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by Sack at 6:00 PM. Number two, public participation, there was none. Number three, order of committee business. A, committee met from 6:00 PM to 6:06 PM. Members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Number one, repeal and replacement ordinance number thirteen dash 2017, the bill. On March 20th, council appealed and replaced ordinance number fifty-six dash 2017, the latest version of the employee manpower, with ordinance number eight dash 2018 to make changes to the lifeguard position. Specifically, changing the number of head lifeguards from one to two, the number of lifeguards from eight to seven, and the number of substitute lifeguards from six to four while adding two concession workers. The same changes need to be made to the latest version of the bill, ordinance number thirteen dash 2017, with one difference. The number of concession workers needs to be changed from nine to two to match ordinance number eight dash 2018. Myers made a motion to request legislation to repeal and replace ordinance number thirteen dash 2017 to make the above changes with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, various appropriations. Auditor Joyce Schiffer reported that the following appropriations needed to be made. A, from unappropriated fund 101, general security of persons and property, police department, materials and supplies funds, two thousand dollars for police explorers, competition expenses, a check having been received from the community foundation. B, from unappropriated fund 101, general parks and playgrounds capital outlay funds, four thousand eight hundred dollars for the purchase and cleaning of forty-nine signatories in the city, a check having been received from the community foundation through the city's street tree fund. C, from unappropriated fund eighty-five dash 2018, crime victims' assistance grant, victims' advocates, personal services funds, one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents as the carryover balance from 2017. D, from unappropriated fund two eighty-six dash 2018, Victims of Crime Act grant, victim advocate, personal services funds, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents as the carryover balance from 2017. Wireball made a motion to request legislation making the appropriations with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, Sack recessed the finance committee at 6:06 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes for the finance committee? None? And moving on to Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Myers.
Health and Safety Committee met Thursday, March 22nd, 2018, called order at 6:06 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item number one, street closures for the car show. Bussaras Lodge number sixty-eight, return order of police has requested permission to close several downtown streets on June 9th, 2018 for the Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show. The food court is being moved from Rensselaer Street to Warren Street this year. McKeever made a motion to request legislation making the request of closures with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Item two, ambulance service. The city's contract with the Central Joint Ambulance District expires on December 31st and a group has given the city a deadline of April 6th to notify the district of whether the city wishes to remain a member. Administration has presented the committee with a proposal for the city to leave the district and entertain bids for a contract that will allow the city to run a second ambulance. Administration believes the city would see net proceeds of one hundred and eight thousand to one hundred and fifty-eight thousand over three years by going to bid for an ambulance provider on its own. Acting Bussaras Fire Chief Chad Schwimley voiced opposition to the city renewing its contract with the Central Joint Ambulance District. After extensive discussions about fire department staffing, hard billing versus soft billing, and the likelihood of facing a future subsidy both outside and inside the Central Joint Ambulance District, council president Sislove noted that whatever the committee decides, the full council should cast a final vote on the issue at its next meeting on April 3. Trucca made a motion to send the issue to the full council for a vote with a second by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, Myers recessed Health and Safety Committee at 7:09 PM.
Okay, in order to make sure that everyone understands everybody's position on this, what I've decided to do this evening is I'm going to go around and ask each one of you for your opinion and how you view this. So if you would share that with, with the people that are here, the people that are viewing this on television, people that are seeing it on the internet. And so we'll start with you, Mr. McKeever. You're the lucky one, you're on my left side and so if you would, I appreciate it if you would state your opinion.
Okay. After quite a bit of reading, several proposals from Mr. Schwimley, from the mayor, Kevin, I am not in favor of leaving the ambulance district. I am not closing the door on us providing the ambulance with the help of the townships of the joint ambulance district. We could be the provider, but I don't think we have enough information. We don't have our ducks in a row. I don't think we can financially afford it. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Opinion is to remain within the Central Joint Ambulance District at this time. Echoing, so Mr. McKeever said, not saying that it's a bad plan to look at in the future, but just need a little more time to make sure that we do it right.
Mr. Wireball? I've, several times I've mentioned my ideas and my feelings, but I do, I too believe we should stay with the Central Joint Ambulance District. I believe we should work closely with the Central Joint Ambulance District to come up with a plan where, within the next three years here, apparently they're wanting a three-year contract, so the next three years we should be able to come up with a plan where, where Bussaras could possibly service the adjoining townships at least and maybe more. I guess that needs some more discussion too. So, yeah, at this time I'm not, I'd like to stay with the Central Joint Ambulance District.
Thank you, Mr. Trucca.
At this present time, I, I too do not want to leave the several joint ambulance committees. I believe that, given that we're three years out from the next contract, I'm sure we could probably sit down and start hammering something out now instead of waiting. That's, that's my personal and way I see it.
Okay, you, Ms. Sack?
Um, staying with everybody else. I also feel that we should stay with them. I'm not against the mayor's proposal in the future, but at this point, I'd like to see everybody work together if that's something that we decide to do.
Mr. Foote?
I would echo exactly what Ms. Sack just said. That's the problem that I've run into with this personally, myself, through this entire process is the fact that, I mean, ultimately I've earned the fact that we all were elected to represent the citizens of this city, but ultimately I still do feel for the people in the community or in the town just as well because they do provide a lot to our city just as much. But why can't we all come together on this? Why can't we be the provider for this? Why can't the counties come together with the city and the townships and why can't we all sit at the table and do this together? Therefore, with that in mind, I would love to leave the district, but I believe it's in our best interest to stay in the district right now.
Mr. Shaw?
The opinion, we should remain in the Central Joint Ambulance District. At the moment, I don't think that we have the budget to allocate towards, well, let's put it this way, there's been a few different plans that we've looked at. I haven't seen that the numbers work, in my view, for that to be financially viable and I believe that there's also some additional staffing that would have to be brought on and there'd be additional expenses that aren't, haven't necessarily, for it to be of a higher quality as a provider. So I'm out of favor of remaining in the district at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
I really, you know, I've, we've talked it to death, I guess. So whatever you folks have decided, you'll decide. So I presented the plan I thought was, you know, solid. In response to two gentlemen spoke earlier, I, you know, a lot of things that they mentioned we had talked about meetings and meetings ago. There's an impression that we were going to do the ambulance, a valid figure comes up and, you know, we, we weren't planning to do that. We were, you know...
you know, we were planning to do that, we were, as far as the numbers are not working, you know, the numbers are, and you heard Acting Chief, too. So I don't know what you need to hear from. What bothers me is, you know, if we do get a subsidy, this is what's coming down. There is no fat in the general fund. So subsidy paid by the UBSirus citizens of UBSirus will result in fewer services, not to the townships, but to the citizens of the city. So get ready if you do, where are you going to take the money from? It's going to have to come from safety forces. So are you prepared to look the citizens of UBSirus in the eye and say, "I'm going to have one less police officer," or "one less firefighter?" Because you are looking out for people that choose to live outside of the city. And I'm not prepared to do that. That's why I'm adamant about this plan. And I know it's unanimous, I'm just telling you, don't expect a zero subsidy. Be thinking about, because you folks will be in on those discussions, you'll be making those decisions. I pray that we don't have a subsidy. I'm just telling you, be ready for it.
Okay, I need a motion then to remain with the Central Joint Ambulance District. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truca. Individually, will poll for this one?
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on, planning committee, Mr. McKeever.
Yes, planning committee met on Thursday, March twenty-second, seven oh nine to seven twenty-seven. Members present, Monica SAC, Bruce Truca, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. Number one, conditional use for multi-family housing in R three district. Council received a letter from the City Planning Commission recommending that section eleven sixty-three point oh four of the UBSirus codified ordinance be amended to allow multi-family housing in the urban neighborhood residential R three district as a conditional use. The request, according to the letter, stemmed from a zoning amendment application submitted by the owner of the property at nine oh two Wetstone Street. The letter lists five minimum conditions to be met for the conditional use to be granted. Myers made a motion to request draft legislation amending section eleven sixty-three point oh four with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Law Director Rob Ratliff expects to have a draft legislation drawn up in time for the committee meeting on April, well, my dates are wrong. At which time, a date for a public hearing thirty days in advance can be set. Conditional use, number two, conditional use for tower construction in GB, G one districts, that is, general business and general industry. Council received a letter from Wavelink Communications, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue, asking that council consider amending its zoning ordinance to allow communication towers in the general business and general industry districts as a conditional use, and remove the required clearance of one hundred percent free fall radius around towers. Truca made a motion to refer the request to the City Planning Commission with a second by SAC. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, McKeever recessed, the planning commission at seven twenty-seven PM.
Actually, the planning committee.
Pla-.
They're so close, I know.
The planning committee at seven twenty-seven PM.
Okay, questions or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, then I need a motion then to place the conditional use for towers in the planning commission. I need a motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truca, to place the conditional use for a tower construction in GB and GI districts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That will go into the planning commission, you'll put together a letter and send to them. Okay? Thank you. Public plans and buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Public plans and buildings committee met Thursday, March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. We began at seven twenty-seven PM and ended at seven forty-one PM. Members present, Bruce Truca, Doug Vogt, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. City tower user agreement. The city's ten-year contract with Wavelink Communications expires in April. A new draft agreement has been drawn up by the law director. Kurt Fankhauser, owner of Wavelink, asks that the termination provision in the agreement to be changed to make termination effective by a voice of council. However, contract termination is per the Ohio Revised Code, an administrative function in the city, not a function of council. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that the draft agreement would continue the city's existing business relationship with Wavelink, with a six-month notice of termination required. McKeever made a motion to request legislation authorizing the administration to enter into an agreement with Wavelink for continued use of city tower space with conditions as detailed in the draft with a second by Vogt. Motion passed by voice vote. Next was the finding reservoir. ODNR has notified the city that it's scheduled to inspect the reservoir stands this year. Wireball was notified by Crawford County Parks that it is not interested in assuming control of the reservoir in its current state. Mayor Jeff Reiser observed that there are other parties interested in purchasing the land. Wireball recessed the public plans and buildings at seven forty-one PM.
Okay, any comments, questions regarding the minutes? Okay, thank you. Would you like to finish up for us then?
Oh, more than anything. Public participation. Dale Ganer in six forty-five Prospect Street asked why potential termination of an agreement such as the one proposed between the city and Wavelink Communications would not be a function of council. Contract terminations are an administrative function in the city per the Ohio Revised Code. Wireball asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees. Motion by McKeever and second by Vogt, adjourned at seven forty-seven PM. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, traffic commission, Mayor Reiser.
We have no minutes.
We do have minutes. Do you want to read them, or do you want the floor to read them? You want to read it?
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, I would, really.
Okay, Madam President. Chief Kepke made a motion, seconded by Acting Chief Schwimley, approving it from the October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, traffic commission meeting, and passed. We met on Friday, February ninth, two thousand eighteen, nine AM. Present were myself, SSD Jeff Wagner, PD Chief Dave Kepke, and Acting Chief Fire Schwimley. I already mentioned the first order of business. So then, we started on the ODOT traffic study. Council approved, waiting on an updated study, it's approximately halfway done. It should be completed sometime by the time the snow stops falling. Ha ha. I added a ha ha there, sorry. Speed limits are not the same on both sides of various streets. West Mansfield Street from the bridge, peat kept water to city limits. Beale Avenue from the tracks to Hopely, Nevada Road, Southern Avenue, east side of city limits, and then Marion Road, south. Mayor Reiser will speak with county engineer Mark Baker about West Mansfield Street and Southern Avenue in regards to where exactly the corporation limits start and stop about potentially working with the townships for a reduction buffer coming into the city limits. Kepke made a motion, seconded by Schwimley, to conduct a ninety-day trial on Beale Avenue from the railroad tracks east to Hopely Avenue, forty mph, motion passed. Schwimley made a motion, seconded by Kepke, to conduct a ninety-day trial on Marion Road from Dr. Griffin's office, south to the city limits, at forty-five mph, motion passed. Number three, the alley opened at City Hall Lot and V and P Building, ninety-day trial ended twelve seventeen, no issues were reported. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Schwimley, to send a letter of recommendation to Health and Safety Committee to amend the traffic control map to open the alley at the north side of City Hall to allow traffic to turn left only. Motion passed. Item number four, charity lane, no parking, ninety-day trial ends two nine, two thousand eighteen, no issues were reported. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Kepke, to send a letter of recommendation to the Health and Safety Committee to amend the traffic control map to have no parking on the west side of the church, and the motion passed. Item number five, four-way stop on West Mansfield, Spring, and Poplar Streets. Chief Kepke passed on information about changing traffic lights to a four-way stop. The commission decided to add Mary Street to add Poplar to the list. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Kepke, to conduct a ninety-day trial of a four-way stop at West Mansfield, Spring Street, West Mansfield, Poplar Street, and Mary Street, and Poplar Street, and the motion passed. Notifications will be sent to the Police Department, Fire Department, Busfire School, Winter Schools, Vita Hospital, Life Support, ODOT, and the media of the trial. Number six, Irving Street, no parking both sides of the street. The Clinton Street project will begin in April. The commission decided to make temporary changes for the duration of the project, notify all the residents, that is, the residents of Irving Street. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Schwimley, to enforce no parking in the south side of Irving Street for the duration of the ODOT project. Motion passed. Number seven, Walnut Street, two-way streets. This issue has been brought to the traffic commission several times. The commission decided to leave Walnut Street as it is because of the width of the street from Southern Avenue to Kilborn Drive. A letter had been sent to City Council and Mr. Richard Close. Number eight, Euclid Avenue, parking on one side, only item was dismissed. Number nine, new business, there was not any new business. Ten, old business. Marion Road, we had previously talked about having a No Jake Brake sign that was tabled on October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. Chief Kepke was to update on a state of city ordinance to accompany a sign. Item number two, to have a ninety-day trial or a speed buffer on Marion Road, they'll lead it issued. Notice will be sent to Ms. Billy Joe Carr. The pedestrian crossings of Norton Way, Lions Park, and Fairgrounds, and Courthouse, Washington Square, Harmon at Lane, and Soccer Fields, and River Street and North Sandusky were discussed. Jeff Del will get pricing for signage in these areas, and it was tabled, told up. Number eleven, Wagner made a motion, seconded by Schwimley, to begin at ten oh seven, eight AM. Motion passed.
Questions or comments regarding the minutes from the traffic commission? None? Moving on. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Mr. Myers, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Moving on to the reporter, city officers, we'll start with you, Mayor Reiser.
Thank you. I did want to say, before I start, that the light at Walmart is being investigated by the police department. The city did not take that out. We think a truck took that out, and it was broken, and we were waiting for parts. So it's going to be out another week or so, maybe two weeks. So again, there, we had a lot of calls, we have it on the access channel, as well as the city website, and a lot of IRA people wondering why we used to be so stupid as to take the, maybe stupid, we're not to ask. But if you want to make a comment about the debate that's been going on, you know, when I addressed the new council members back in January, you know, I asked, I told them we're going to agree on everything, but always treat each other with respect. We had, you know, we had a very good debate, I tell them our pursuit should work. You know, we presented, I thought, a persuasive argument. I know it's, when you were elected, this is probably, you know, you didn't think you were going to have such a tough decision right away. This is probably the toughest thing that's come up in my tenure. And so I appreciate everybody, the people that came and spoke, and, you know, so I just commend you for, you know, hearing everybody out and being courteous and representative act for it. Thank you for that. Another thing I want to say briefly about Tree City, this is something I'm very proud of, and I know the Tree Board is very proud of this, too. There is, I know it took a lot of heat on Facebook and certain people about Tree City. Tree City, there was a misconception, there was no cost to Tree City. It was a free thing you applied for. Tree City was a designation that you received if you had a plan to maintain your tree inventory and improve your tree inventory, make it safer. And we had a plan for that, and the council a lot of the money for that, a minimal amount of money that allowed us to get that. It didn't cost, we could have had, we still need that money in the budget. We have lots of trees that need some attention. There's some in the park right now that are in danger of falling, so we need to, we need to readdress that eventually, so. Anyway, that award will be received by the city in an ODNR ceremony in North Sandusky on April eighteenth, and you're all, I think you all got information about that, you're all on that. Okay, and then, okay, about my, what do you all say to my notes tonight? I want to talk about young citizens in the future of UBSirus. I think it's crucial. This is a statement that's very, so obvious to all of us, that we need young people to live here, to have families here, just as we did. If we don't have that, we're not going to have growth. We need growth to be prosperous. There are several challenges facing rural America right now. We're no different than, Wall Street Journal had an article Monday about some of the same issues that are facing us, and they were talking about cities in Iowa. Probably about population decline. The number of our eighteen-year-olds in the state has peaked. So we have to find, it's not that we don't have enough high school graduates in our community, we don't have enough staying in our community. We need to, we need to get them to stay. So Kelly Patterson, our administrative assistant, and I have been meeting with the high school juniors, seniors for the last few weeks, last month, actually. We went to Kerne Crawford first, then to UBSirus, and then ended up at Winford. And just addressed the kids, and listened to them, and talked to them, and heard what they had to say, and I'm happy to report, I think the futures are going to be good with these guys. You know, the press that they get is sometimes, you know, not so good, but I didn't see that. I mean, they're bright, they're involved, and they're ready to go. They are ready to go. Parents should be commended, the school system, I know it's a different era, different time, and it takes a different type of parenting, different type of school system, but the staff at Crawford, Winford, UBSirus, and they should be very proud. I didn't see those issues about, you know, work cabinets, I didn't see it with anyone. What we want to do is explain to them what we're doing at UBSirus, and how we're trying to make this a pretty real small town, and what we see coming, and what we envision this kind of is going to look like for them, the kind of jobs we're going to have. And then I invite them to stay. If they went off to college, or off to the service, and I said, "Please, make sure you come back. Please consider us coming back, we'd love to have you back here." And I talked about the number of jobs that we have right now, and they can graduate. When I graduated, I, people wanted to get into Timken, or General Electrical, or the other factories, and made great careers, you know. There was a time when that wasn't possible here, but now it is again. You know, you've got jobs, and you can get out of school, and you can go and make a career. So I mentioned that to them. I have had a lot of good questions, they're positive, they know a lot about the community, they know about the parks, they know about the restaurants, they know about all that we're trying to do, and they're concerned about the environment, you know, they're concerned about just fairness, quality of life issues, more than we work, you know, I will hand that to them. They want, they want things to do for their families. They want nice basketball courts, they want nice tennis courts, they want a swimming pool, you know, but they want a healthy and diverse business, we all think that we're trying to do. So we're trying to unify our community, the three school districts that come in our city limits. We're all about community unity. You know, I'm a graduate of UBSirus High School, I was driving to Crawford mostly on I was riding at Crawford, mostly on the losing end, on a lot of matches, and we won our share, too. But some of my best friends went to Crawford and went to Winford, still good friends today. So Kelly and I were honored to be able to meet with these kids, so we laid any of them out there. Congratulations. And we want everybody to know that we're working hard to make this community the best possible, just as previous administrations have been, too. So I ask all of you to be focused on the future. I know we get down and dirty on these decisions that we got to make and budgets and make some hard choices, but we always want to keep our heads up what we're doing for these young kids and to make our community attractive for them. And thanks again to the parents for raising such great kids, and I'll see them again next year. That's all there is, Mr. Meyer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor this evening?
I have questions and comments. I'd just like to say I completely agree with Jeff. I actually, this year, just got blessed to actually read some scholarships for our Juonas Club, and going through these scholarships, I was very refreshed that one of them in their essay put how they wanted to go off and get their degree and then come back and raise their family here and their kids, and so it's really nice to read that in there. Because they are thinking that way, so. And there are some, it seemed like almost every one of them already have college credits already, and they're not even graduated from high school, so that speaks highly of the law.
And we see the same thing on our Altrus applications for scholarships, so it is, it's, a lot of them are looking to stay in the community. They want, this is home. Any other comments? Moving on. Service Director's report.
Yes, Mr. Wagner would like to refer the manpower for an extra seasonal help holiday pay and sick leave to the Finance Committee, and would also like to refer the billet for restructuring of the solid waste department to Finance Committee. The WTP demo slash raw water line conversion slash line lagoons. We opened bids last week, March 27. The bids are in the hands of Jones and Henry, right now, our engineering firm, and they will, you know, get back with us about line lagoons, we ask some questions about that before the Board of Control meeting, at which time we will award the bids, but right now it's in Jones and Henry's hands. We're looking for a boom mower operator this summer. Anybody knows, has any skills with boom mowers? If anyone is interested in a position, please stop by the mayor's office for an application. And then, number four, just reiterating what I said about the street light mower. Police Department is still investigating the incident. Please have patience. We will get that light up. We're working on it now. We've been out there for a couple days, and whenever it comes in, it'll be put back together. Thanks for your patience. Please drive carefully. That's for Mr. Wagner.
Any questions regarding the Service Director's report? I need a motion then to refer the manpower for seasonal help, holiday pay, and sick pay, or sick leave to the Finance Committee, and also to refer the billet for restructuring of the solid waste department to the Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
No, ma'am.
Second? Motion by Mr. Schock, second by Ms. Sack, to refer the manpower for seasonal help, holiday pay, and sick leave to the Finance Committee, as well as the billet for restructuring of the solid waste department to the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And I believe that's all we have. Question about the boom mower operator. Is that, it's a seasonal job, is it 40 hours a week?
Yes, seasonal job. It begins as soon as it quits snowing. Actually, that starts a little later, later in May. And it's a 40-hour job, and it ends when it quits.
Growing.
Qits growing.
Thank you. Any comments on your, in your seat here?
Yeah, there's a couple of things going on. Thank you, Madam President. I have one referral tonight to Health and Safety Committee. We would like to refer possible legislation regulating the disposal of those plastic wrapped newspaper ads that we all find in our drive-thru sometimes. So we have some proposed legislation that we're working on regarding those. With respect to property maintenance, we have new signs.
Show them off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. These are great. One of the things that we've struggled with over the last year, too, is having people know when property maintenance appeals or hearings are going on, both here and at court. As we've seen with the Rogers Street property, when we got enough notice out there, we had 30 people show up, at least. So these pop signs here will be showing up on the front yards of houses that are, or properties that are in a hearing, or a public hearing, so that people can know, can attend, and voice their opinions, yea or nay, as to the property maintenance violations. The bottom notice is, the new notice that we'll be using, instead of the door hangers for grass and trash and those kinds of things, everybody, not everybody, but the funny thing with those door knockers is people just didn't see them. They just kind of blown away all the time. So these ones are stickers. And they will be affixed to things that, stickers you can stick on, so that people know if there's an issue and can take care of it, much like what you see in a vending car on the side of the road, and we can use those for vending cars as well. So those are new things in the arsenal, if you will, and those will start popping up around town from time to time from the afternoon. I believe that's all, unless somebody wants to ask me about 417 warrants.
417.
That is, I noticed that this morning, that is a court-ordered eviction situation. Yeah, I would say even more pictures. That's a court-ordered eviction situation. The family, the family lieutenant has 40 hours to scoop things up, now that it's been placed by the curb. I've talked to the property owner. He's aware that it's ugly and it's a problem, and has already retained someone to scoop it all up and take it to the landfill once the court-mandated time is passed. It's an unfortunate function of the eviction process that we live to deal with, but that's it. And he's also well-aware of the fact that it's set up in the night for two days, because landfill bill's going to be way higher reported if it was dry.
Yeah, especially after today.
Yeah, so. But that, it should be taken care of, and Mr. Grove's aware of it, and will monitor it, and will be out there Friday, Thursday, morning, moving on very well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the Law Director of Safety? Mr. Myers?
The form on top, does that have the ability to be designated? Do we have a laminator?
It, it does. We have a laminator that does any size, but generally, the hearings are set more than a few days out, and, you know, we don't want to litter up the city with a bunch of these things all over the place all the time. So we put them out, you know, a few days to a week ahead of time, so they're not out there for a long period of time.
Better daily today, where it probably wouldn't last as long.
Yeah, yeah, and that's going to be a problem, but, you know, we can laminate them and see what kind of response and stuff we get. You know, I mean, these are definitely trial run. This is kind of the first batch of those. We did limited production of them, and we really didn't want to go the extra expensive pain for the laminated ones up front. And we do have the, we do have the laminator that we use here for time, for time to time, so we can, we can do that. We'll be able to use these. They're a little bit generic, intentionally so, so that we can use them for VZA, for property maintenance, for court hearings, even when some of the ones are in court. So we want to make sure it's usable for all that.
Okay. Any other questions for the Law Director? Mr. Wagner?
I just have one. You know, I've noticed, I guess, when I noticed 417 there, went by, and some of the neighbors in that area had tires sitting on that, and, you know, we think about the West Nile wires, which is, we're going to start hearing about again, so, and when I looked at our, I mean, we have legislation in there for junk vehicles and things, but it doesn't really cover that, but I don't know if there's anything we can do to try to keep these tires from.
Yeah. Water. And I believe we, I believe the property maintenance code has a section in it for items that hold stagnant water, which the tires would qualify for. I'll have to double-check if there's anything for just abandoned tires. Obviously, if it's just the summer tires, where you get the winter snow tires on your car or something, that's one thing versus if you're stockpiling tires on your property, that's a whole different thing and much more serious.
Well, it wasn't stockpiling, it was just, you know, taking tires that still had a little wear on them, you know, without taking ten bucks out of them or something, you know.
It's definitely something we'll take a look at and monitor. If you see them, you know, just those little green cards, if you still have those, the green cards, if you need, you need cards if there's a property violation, you know, you have to go and have those on the, and stuff like that.
And you can do that online, you can do that online, too.
Yeah, you can do it online as well, and we'll check into that. We do have the stagnant water stuff on the property maintenance page, so you can be addressed to.
Yeah, I did, I did get into the property maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions for the Law Director? I guess I have one question.
Oh, no.
The new victim advocate, how's he doing?
He's doing great, and we're letting him settle in a little bit until I subject him to the wings of this body. But, you know, he's sounding great. He, you know, he's been training on the new Marzies law a week or two ago. Tremendous. He's brought in a few new things for us, working with a couple of state law victim advocates groups. You know, one of the things that has been a problem here, and we really haven't the resources to address it, is the, is the cost of getting divorced. And in so many of our domestic bonds cases, and our officers get tested, we need people that just, you know, kids, and they can't afford to get divorced, and it just creates that conflict over and over and over again, and he's found a resource for that. And so we're going to be able to, you know, he'll be out publicly speaking addressing that, but it's one of the, one of the things that are a priority for us to try to deal with, but for people that are indigent and that are, you know, kind of trapped in these circumstances and need that legal help, because it's not cheap. Even biography is really cost prohibitive. We've identified a resource for them, and I think we'll be able to, you know, really help some, some people that are trapped in abusive relationships, giving them closure and separation. So looking forward to that, and just, you know, some of the things. So he'll be in, I, he and I have talked about it, you first, first, you made a little time with yourself.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Moving on, oh, the referral. Yes, I need a motion to refer regulating the disposal of the plastic wrapped flyers that are thrown in our driveways to the Health and Safety Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved. All of them taken.
All of them. Motion by Mr. Truca, and second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion passed.
I thought it sounded like something we can all work together.
Okay, moving on. The Auditor, Mrs. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. You have the state tax position for the end of March, and the income tax revenues, and as looking at this comparison, I think April's going to be huge. And unfortunately, one of my girls caught the flu today, and went home sick and probably won't be in for a few days, so I spent part of my afternoon in income tax. So, yeah, the next couple of weeks are going to be crazy, with the deadline being the 17th, and, and I, please, people, come in before the 16th and 17th, because it's going to be, it's going to be bad. So we would appreciate everyone, we'll get our boxes out in the lobby here this week so that people can drop them off, instead of having to come upstairs if they've got their returns prepared and, and their checks with it. So we'll get that going.
The other question is about the volunteer people that come in and help when you fell out.
I've not gotten a confirmation from them. I'm assuming they're going to be here. My girl who went out today was going to take care of that, so.
We'll get that out, we'll get that out on.
Get it on Access, yes.
And out on Access, that the times, the dates that they will be here and available.
Because I believe they're actually wrapping up, usually they wrap up about the end of this week, as far as doing it out at their location on Marion Road, so hopefully they will be available to come in and help us. So we'll get that figured out and get posted.
Okay.
Another thing, you've got the revenue tallies to budget, and I would just like to point out before anyone panics, as far as the street revenues, sewer, and stormwater, it's not as bad as it appears in the percentages, because our estimated revenues include that 0% loan money that'll be coming in as we work on these projects, and of course, none of that is coming in yet. So that makes the revenue look bad. That's all in the, you know, the year-end number for estimated resources, so I just want you to be aware of that.
And that number could make you cry.
Yes. And I do have a list of referrals for you tonight. I know that's your favorite item. I have appropriations that I need. The first one will be for unappropriated street CMR funds to Fund 210, street construction, maintenance, and repair. Under street construction, maintenance, and repair, the object line 23 contractual services, the sum of $3,750 for engineering services. Unappropriated waterworks funds to Fund 701 Waterworks, 7525 distribution, item 23 contractual services, the sum of $3,750 for engineering, and also, item 25 capital outlay, the sum of $10,086 for pump repair. This is for one of our pump houses, and originally, they had the price thinking they could rebuild it, and it turned out they could not, so it was an additional $10,000 that we need to pay for this pump. Now, we have the bill already. Item three, unappropriated sewage disposal funds to Fund 720 Sewage Disposal, 7540 sewers and drains, item 23 contractual services, the sum of $13,250 for engineering. From unappropriated stormwater funds to Fund 760 Stormwater Utility, 7545 Stormwater Utility, item 23 contractual services, the sum of $6,250 for engineering. Now, these engineering costs are a part of what our engineering firm had given us last year for the various projects. This was on a miscellaneous line at the bottom for part of the planning and preparation work that has to be done ahead of these projects, and we missed that in the annual appropriation. So that's what these are for. Unfortunately, I have a couple other things that I don't have on your list that just came to me this afternoon, and I didn't get a chance to write them up since I was in income tax. Item number five would be, again, some unappropriated street funds to Fund 210 Street CMR, 7610 Street CMR, item 25 Capital Outlay, the sum of $200,000 for the Southern Avenue Trump Sewer Project. This is a change order for the work that needs to be done to get Southern repaved, and because of that change order, I have item number six. We need to amend Resolution 205, 2017, for the above referenced project to increase the not-to-exceed amount of the contract. For some reason, when that legislation was done, we didn't add the 10%, for whatever reason, so we're going to have to amend that. And that's all I have.
Thank heavens. Okay, any questions or comments that you have for the Auditor regarding any of these projects? Okay, then we're going to need to, all of these need to go into Finance Committee. First item is the $3,750 for engineering services. Is that one of those general project?
Yes.
Okay. And then, another $3,750 for engineering into Waterworks, and $10,086 for pump repair into the Waterworks Fund, also from unappropriated sewage disposal funds, and the sewage disposal fund, $13,250 for engineering. This is the engineering that goes in ahead of the project. And from unappropriated stormwater funds, 760 Stormwater Utility, the amount of $6,250 for engineering, and from unappropriated funds in. And from Unappropriated Funds in 210, which is Street Construction Maintenance and Repair, two hundred thousand dollars for the Southern Avenue Change Order to get that Southern Avenue paved. And also to amend 205-2017 to change that do not exceed, number two, include the ten percent, which will then cover the extra monies we need for that project. Do I have a motion for all of that to put it in Finance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Next, you, last meeting, you were given the Treasurer's Report for February of 2018 for the, covering that period, and I need a motion to accept and file it.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by...
Second.
Mr. Foulke to accept and file Treasurer's Report for February of 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Okay, Police Chief, it's not with us, we don't have any report from him. I need a motion to accept the city officer's reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foulke, second by Mr. Schach to accept the city officer's reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. We've accepted those reports. This is the time where visitors input regarding reports of standing, special committees, and then city officers, if anyone would like to address counsel regarding any of these. That's the standing committees, special committees, and city officers. Anyone to address counsel? No one? Moving on, for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have four pieces of legislation, two ordinance, two resolutions. Ordinance number nine, 2018, repealing and replacing ordinance number thirteen, 2017, the table of human resource staffing organization for the city of Desires, Ohio, retroactive to January one, 2018, and declaring an emergency, that is for the lifeguard changes, that is referred back to Finance. Ordinance number ten, 2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty-seven, 2017, renewing the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of two thousand dollars, to the material and supplies line item within the Police Department category within the Program One, Security of Persons and Properties subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of forty-eight hundred dollars to the Capital Outlay line item within the Parks and Playgrounds category within the Program Three, Leisure Times subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Grant Funds, the sum of one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents to the Personal Services line item within the Victim Advocate category within the 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Grant subparagraph. And finally appropriating from unappropriated 2018 Victims of Crime Act Funds, the sum of two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents to the Personal Services line item within the Victim Advocate category within the 2018 Victims of Crime Act subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. That is referred back to Finance as well. Resolution number twenty, number two seventeen, 2018, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Desires, Ohio to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles except authorized emergency personnel, on Saturday, June nine, 2018, from seven AM Eastern Daylight Time to twelve AM Midnight Eastern Daylight Time on East Warren Street from the food court, from twelve PM Eastern Daylight Time to twelve AM Midnight Eastern Daylight Time along Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the one hundred blocks of East and West Mansfield Streets and Washington Square, the one hundred blocks of East and West Rensselaier Streets, the one hundred block of West Warren Street, and the one hundred blocks of East and West Charles Streets respectively, allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Wall Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue in order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a cruise and with a custom and classic car show parade route for an expected six hundred custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special event to be sponsored by the Fraternal Order of Police, P.S.R. Number sixty-eight, which must provide for and direct all signs needed to reroute state highways according to the directions of the Service Safety Director and Chief of Police. The Service Safety Director and Chief of Police are hereby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through subject areas to facilitate the early movement of traffic during or for said time period through the city of Desires, Ohio. That's referred back to Health and Safety. And lastly, Resolution number two eighteen, 2018, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the city of Desires to enter into an agreement with Wade Link sixteen-seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue, Desires, Ohio, four-four-eight-two-zero for the continued use of city tower space and declaring an emergency. Back to public finance and...
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truca, to accept the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Ordinance number nine dash twenty eighteen is referred back to Finance. Ordinance number ten dash twenty eighteen is referred back to Finance Committee. Resolution number two seventeen dash twenty eighteen is referred to Health and Safety Committee. And Resolution two eighteen dash twenty eighteen is referred back to Public Lands and Buildings Committee. This is the time where any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone want to address counsel this evening? No one? Do we need a recess?
No.
Committee reports on pending legislation, Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to ordinance nine dash two thousand eighteen, repeal and replacement of the billlet. Finance is favorable to ordinance ten dash two thousand eighteen, we need various appropriations.
Health and Safety Committee?
Health and Safety is favorable to Resolution two seventeen dash two thousand eighteen for the car shows, street closures.
Public Lands and Buildings. Public Lands and Buildings is favorable. Resolution...
Two eighteen dash twenty eighteen, city tower user agreement.
Okay, I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept these reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. There's a misspelling in one of them, I just pointed out to the law director, and it's on ten dash twenty eighteen. It's just, everybody, everybody messes up the spelling of the word category.
It's supposed to be...
I know. So that's just a typo. We'll fix that one before the legislation gets signed, okay? Okay, for further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings, a proposed ordinance number nine dash twenty eighteen, which is the repeal and replacement of the billlet, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foulke?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
Ordinance number nine, twenty eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number nine dash twenty eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Foulke?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance number nine dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings, a proposed ordinance number ten dash twenty eighteen, which are the various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foulke?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten, twenty eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number ten dash twenty eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Foulke?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution number two seventeen dash twenty eighteen... Oh, that's that number. Excuse me. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
Foulke?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution number two seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution two seventeen dash twenty eighteen?
So moved.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foulke?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution two seventeen dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of Resolution number two eighteen dash twenty eighteen, which is city tower user user agreement, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second?
Foulke?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number two eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution two eighteen dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foulke?
Yes.
Schak?
Yes.
Resolution two eighteen dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. Thank you. Under old business, any, then anyone wants to bring up Mr. McKeever?
Yes. We need to bring up about the water to the residents of Crestland Road, Route nineteen, second busy, lady did that, I remember.
Leslie Johnson?
Head town, twenty, twenty people who want water, and they want it. So we need to bring that up and get that moving. However, we have to do this.
Okay. And that should go into which committee?
It's in committee.
It's in committee.
Yeah, I did bring it up to bring it up again.
Okay. We'll make sure we add it, you want it for discussion on Thursday then. Okay, so we'll add it. I think it's in service.
Yes, it is.
So we'll let, make sure that that gets added on the agenda for Thursday evening. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Full business.
I would just like to make sure that we discuss the amendment to our income tax ordinance since that appeal did not, yeah, go through. So we're going to have to do legislation for the state to do those payments return, unfortunately.
Excellent, dear. Okay, I didn't say that.
I didn't hear that.
I didn't. Okay, that'll have to go into Finance Committee. It's already in Finance?
It's there.
So we'll make sure that we add it to our agenda for Thursday evening then. Okay. Anything else under old business? Okay, moving to new miscellaneous business. Wednesday, April the eleventh, the Crawford County Partnership State of the Vision is from five to eight thirty PM at Pickwick Place. Cost is seventy-five dollars. You can call four-one-nine-five-six-three-one-eight-zero-nine if you would like to attend.
If you're...
Yes.
If we, if the city of Desires gets ten, then we can get to sixty-five. So, but they're selling out quickly, and so if either of them let me know or let Kelly know by tomorrow, hopefully, we get ten seats, it would be sixty-five now, so...
Or you can notify Todd Hill.
Or Todd.
Okay. Thursday, April the twelfth, the Avalons Crawford County Community Concert Association from seven-thirty to nine PM is at the Desires Elementary School, and they always sell individual tickets for those. So they have had an absolutely outstanding concert series this year. So if you want to get some tickets, call four-one-nine-five-six-two-three-two-two-four. Or I'm sure if you showed up that night and want to see it, they'll gladly give you a, sell you a ticket there. On Saturday, April the fourteenth, is Rotary Auction Fest from five to nine PM at the Trillium. Tickets are a hundred dollars, as they always are.
May I, ma'am, chairman?
Yes.
I gotta interrupt again.
You're on roll.
City of Desires table is, is, is open for business, and let me know tomorrow, Kelly, or Todd. With that hundred dollars, you do get fifty dollars of bid money. So your, your net cost is actually only fifty dollars, and it goes to a good cause. I don't know, Andy, do you know who the...
Crawford Reads.
Crawford Reads. Wonderful.
Crawford Reads twenty, yes.
Yes.
It's a group affiliated with the library and trying to encourage young people to begin reading at an early age, and parents to read to their children at an early age. Very good organization, new organization, so a good partner for Rotary. And also the meal is always included in that hundred dollars as well. It's always a very good meal.
It's fun.
It is fun.
And for a new organization, Crawford Reads already participated in Spooktacular this past year, and I've gotten lined up again for this year, that they provided a lot of the books that were given away at Spooktacular. I'm going to try one more here, okay?
I'll try the more.
On Wednesday, Wednesday, April the eighteenth, the Trusica Club of Desires, the barbecue chicken dinner is from four to six PM. It would pick up out at the county fairgrounds. Cost is eight-fifty. Anybody wants a ticket, find me, I've got tickets. Saturday, April the twenty-first, is Kiwanis Community Garage Sale from eight AM to three PM out at the county fairgrounds. That one is a freebie. You can go out there, and they usually have a nice group of people show up to that. You want to give us a little...
Actually, there's a great number of vendors. Deb Weisenauer is the one that actually heads up our community garage sale. He's gotten back a good slew of vendors that'll be there this year. He'll have the kettle corn guy there like he always does, which a lot of people come just to get kettle corn, community garage sale. But it should be really good, and it should be a great event.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone wants to bring up, on the new and miscellaneous business?
I do want to...
Mr. McKeever?
Do want to mention that the BZA okayed the house at the corner of East Rensselaier and Iron Street, the Mater House, is now going to be a craft...
They're going to sell second...
Arts and craft. Arts and craft.
They're going to sell arts and crafts on first floor of the house. And...
What do you have, Mr. McKeever?
No.
Court is the blue, blue and...
White and...
Red. Blue, white, and red Victoria.
Yeah, Victoria.
And just...
It was a mater who built it. Mater who was a fire chief who built that house, and she's naming it the Mater House, and we approve that on the BZA.
We're supposed to take goods on consignment, I think, too, if you want to sell stuff.
I, I, I can't answer all that.
No, I read something about it when I saw it, so that's why I was, yeah.
And that'll be sometime this summer. I'm not sure exactly when she's going to...
Anything else? No? Okay. We're off here this evening. The Joint Regular Committee meetings, all referrals from this council meeting and any open project listed items may be discussed during the committee meetings this Thursday at six PM. The referrals are?
We've got five new, six new referrals. We've got five appropriations from the auditor, Finance. We have the amendment of Resolution two oh five, twenty seventeen, to amending not to exceed number. That is from the auditor, Finance. We have the employee manpower, the season on health, the sick and holiday pay. That is from the Service Safety Director to Finance. We have the solid waste department and the billlet. That is from the Service Safety Director to Finance. We have traffic map changes and letter, that's from Council to Health and Safety. And we have sticker flyers, that's from the law director to Health and Safety. Our meeting committee for Thursday's agenda at this time, we have the old Irving Street Garage, the ODOT Garage in Public Lands and Buildings. We have the three, three clients here. We have a lot of an expansion outside city limits, that's in service. And we have the state HP forty-nine income tax ordinance, that is in Finance.